Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of East Providence Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August, excuse me, April 2nd. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Mayor, would you like to lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
(inaudible)
Okay, thank you.
(inaudible)
Just for the public to know that these photos that we have on the monitor behind the chambers here, they were provided by a resident of East Providence, so I want to encourage those who have some nice photos of the City of East Providence, anywhere in the City of Providence, just submit them into the clerk's office, and we can post them up here during our council meetings. And I would like to thank Mr. Langley for supplying these photos to us. And then also, in addition to that, we have a riddle up here if anybody would like to solve at some point in time. Not during the meeting, though. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Council President. The first item is approval of the consent calendar. Council Journals, November 7th, 2018, December 4th, 2018, January 22nd, 2019, February 19th, 2019, have all been completed and need approval.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Someone.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote please.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Licenses not requiring public hearing for vote. Metacomic Country Club, 500 Veterans Memorial Parkway, application for dance/entertainment license. The applicant is Anthony Scorpio, 67th Street in Providence.
Is the applicant here this evening? You're here on behalf of the applicant? Step up to the podium, please. Would you like to swim in, Mr. Solicitor? Madam Clerk, do we have anything that's outstanding, or all the information, you know, is up to date at this point in time?
As up to date, yes, it is. We've been working together. It's been nice to work with you. And I did receive something yesterday stating that as of right now, anything, everything looks good. Everything looks good. All the debts have been paid in regards to the liquor license, so.
All right, this is a public hearing? If I'm not mistaken?
Actually, yes. This is, this part is only going to cover the dance and the entertainment. The next one is a public hearing.
Where are the dance votes?
So regarding the application for dance entertainment...
That might be mislabeled on the top. Okay, so this is not for public hearing?
Item 6.
Application for dance entertainment license.
Oh, okay.
And then the next one is, they're doing two different licenses.
Okay, all right, sure. Anyone have any questions?
Regarding the application for dance entertainment license, I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the dance license at this point in time by Councilman Cahoon, seconded by Councilman Rodrick. Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Licenses requiring public hearing for the vote. Metacomic Country Club, 500 Veterans Memorial Parkway, transfer Class 1, vitualling license. It's license number 2019-51.
Excuse me, can I make a point before you?
Sure.
We are effectively closing the transaction, signing tomorrow, closing the transaction Thursday, so it won't take effect until Thursday.
Okay, so it's not tomorrow?
No.
Okay.
Maybe, but I don't trust the banks to get it done in time.
So that has no bearing as far as the vote is this evening, right, Mr. Solicitor? Okay, at the pleasure of the council, anybody have any questions at this point in time before I open up the floor for a public hearing?
They'll sign their business file in case anybody would like to look at it.
Okay. Anyone from the public would like to speak in favor or against? With that, with no one coming forth at this point in time, I'd like to close the public hearing. And leave that up.
Mr. President, I move to approve the vitualling license.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor right now for a vitualling license by Councilman Cahoon. Would someone like to second that motion?
Mr. President, a second.
Okay, and we have a second by Councilman Rodrick. Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. No further discussion, thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Move right along, next item will be communications, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, Mayor Communications, OpenGov Software Presentation, His Honor, Mayor Roberto De Silva.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to come up here and speak real brief. Since day one, it's been my goal to improve the budgeting format that we have here in the City of East Providence. I campaigned on it. I campaigned on open, transparent government. And we've done our due diligence in looking at different vendors that would provide us the kind of transparency that we're looking for. So we've spoken to a lot of different vendors, and we sat down with OpenGov. And OpenGov seems to be the most robust, and I think, the software platform that will offer the greatest transparency and greatest ease in formatting the budget and in informing the public of what's going on. So I'm going to call up Davis Polidoro to come up and give a brief presentation, 15-minute. And this, the work that we've done on getting this vendor onboard is all due to not only what the council has asked us to do, but also what our team has wanted to do since day one. So I'm very proud of the fact that you are all on the same page as far as getting that transparency more in, into the community. We hope that this software platform will cut down the budgeting preparation process by at least 50%. So our department heads will be able to put together the budget in about half the time. The other portion of it is that we will be able to allow the council members the ability to see the budgeting process live. So you'll be able to log in also and see exactly what's going on with the budget. The public will be able to see exactly where we stand on a month-to-month basis as far as how much money's been spent from the budget, how much money is still allocated in the budget. This software, and I'll leave it to David to explain, also would allow us to put big projects like the school project, and people will be able to log in and see exactly where we stand with the school budget, the school project, as far as the budgeting of that project and how everything's progressing. So I'm real proud to introduce Mr. Polidoro from OpenGov.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for taking a few minutes, thank you very much for taking a few minutes to review the platform tonight. I'm really excited to take you through it. So we have just a brief couple of slides, and then I'm actually going to show you some live windows in our software application. I'll be going back and forth, so bear with me. So...
You can roll that over.
Oh, great.
Probably have to unhook some of the board.
No, I think I'm okay. Perfect. This is perfect. So OpenGov, if you're not familiar, we are, our mission is to power more effective and accountable government. And unlike a lot of other vendors in this space, we are built 100% for municipalities. We are not, this software application was built from the ground up to handle the business that the City of East Providence and other municipalities are doing. We're not out marketing this to insurance companies or any other vertical. We're headquartered in San Francisco, California, and we come from a very innovative startup Silicon Valley environment. In fact, the company got its start when our founder utilized some grant funding out in California during the great financial crisis in 2008. And he found a lot of the California municipalities were failing. And among many reasons, outdated technology was one of them. They just could not get the data that they needed to make real-time decisions. And that's where OpenGov grew out of. And right now, we are the market leader in multi-tenant SaaS solutions for government So this slide actually will show you a little bit about what the OpenGov platform does. At the bottom of the slide, these are the various data silos throughout the town. Most important would be your financial information. And what OpenGov does is it aggregates all of the information, both financial and non-financial, wherever it sits, and unifies it into one platform. In that platform, we're able to do a couple of different things. First and foremost, is a comprehensive and collaborative budgeting suite. And this, this gives everybody, all stakeholders insight into the budgeting process at all times. Secondarily, there's operational performance, which allows department heads, city leaders to monitor the data points in real time as they happen and get information without having to, you know, make a lot of phone calls or wait a few days for somebody to pull it out of the accounting system or any other data silo. And additionally, there's the citizen engagement piece of this, which is obviously about that transparency issue. We believe that, you know, when you're ready, you can start to release data out to the public in a manner in which you would like to release it. And more importantly, it's not just a data dump. It allows you to release the information in a narrative format with charts, graphics, videos, and narratives, so you can explain what you're putting out there to the public. So we are, as I said, we're, we're in over, it's actually now upwards of 2,100 public sector organizations across 49 of the 50 states. Vermont is our last holdout, and we're working hard on them. And we... So what I want to say here is that we spend a lot of time talking to our clients. And all of our clients influence the roadmap, and what we hear back from them is very encouraging. As Mayor De Silva mentioned, we're hearing on average upwards of 50% less time spent on budget development from our budget, budgeting suite clients, over 80% less time spent on reporting and gathering information, 20% fewer FOIA requests. And this is really exciting. We're finding in many instances, on average, about 1% of the budget, because of the line of sight into it through our budgeting suite, municipalities are finding about 1% available for reallocation. And we've got a lot of great use cases and stories where folks are finding funding for things that they didn't think they had by using OpenGov. So with that, I'm actually going to jump right into a couple of views of the software. So what you're looking at on the screens, this is the, an example of the homepage of OpenGov's budget development tool. And what's really great about this tool is it gives a line of sight into all of the departmental requests. It provides a status, so folks can see at any given time who's submitting their budget, who's working on it, if anything's been rejected, and why it has been. It also gives some top-line information on the effect that particular departmental proposal will have on the overall budget, if it creates a surplus or a deficit. What's very good here is that OpenGov's budget development tool has been created for ease of use. So we recognize that new softwares depend on the user adoption. And for that reason, we have built this from the ground up to be very easy to use, and we're geared towards the audience of the people that we're targeting. So as you can see here, each one of these departmental proposals, you can enter some justifications, you can attach supporting documents. And the great thing is that we pull your financial information directly from your accounting system. So that allows the department heads not to have to go searching around for prior year information. We're really focusing in, the only thing that they have to fill in is what their proposal is for this current year. Additionally, one of the great differentiators between OpenGov is we have a full workforce planning suite as well that feeds directly into the budgeting process. Typically, workforce costs are about 75, 80% of your, of your annual operating budget. And what's great about OpenGov is that we can pull in your entire position list, and we can manage all of your grade step increases and all of your, basically, all of your contractual obligations, COLAR increases, grade and step. We can calculate that automatically, prorate it for your fiscal year, and have it flow directly to the appropriate line item of the budget. So that cuts down tremendously on both errors and work. So what that leaves is time for your financial professionals to run what-if scenario analysis as you go through various, you know, bargaining unit exercises. So one of the other great things with OpenGov is that day-to-day, we want folks like yourselves, the mayor, and all the department heads to be able to monitor the performance of the city. And what you're looking at now is OpenGov provides internal reporting and dashboards that can be used to monitor basically any data point within the city, whether that's financial or non-financial. And you can see the breadth of the various dashboards that we offer. We see many of our clients use these for departmental dashboards, positional dashboards, so we envision the mayor having a dashboard that he would come into at the beginning of each day. And even, we use this to track strategic goals throughout the city as well. So this is an example of one of the dashboards. And as you can see, these dashboards are constructed by various tiles. And these tiles can capture any data point that you would like to see. And what's really great about it is that you can also set targets, and you can track performance against particular targets. There's some visual indicators such as on the far right there, if you're on track, on target, or red will show up if it's something that needs to be looked at. And each one of these tiles are interactive, and if you want more information, you could begin to click down to view the underlying report. And why that's really important is that when you want to do analysis on particular data points, we pull in that transactional level of data. So your analysts don't have to go anywhere other than OpenGov to get the answers as to what's making up particular issues, or the data is there to a transactional level. So again, this is a, this is an example of a general monthly budget to actual report in OpenGov. These reports are obviously, will help your department heads, they can be set up to look at this. We're looking at this across an entire fiscal year, across all departments. And all of these are both interactive, and you can, you can set views and look at this in multiple different ways. If you want to look at expense type instead of departments, it's easily, it automatically updates, and you can toggle that. We find a lot of our folks will set views for their monthly departmental expense reports instead of sending those out via email or manufacturing them in Excel. Each department head can have their monthly budget to actuals with tracking targets set up in the system. And you can see who's going in looking at them, and you can communicate right through the system as well. As you can see, each graphic has an underlying summary table, and we can, for the analyst, they can generate the underlying transactions that makes up any of these items. And it's completely interactive and clickable. You can drill down all the way, as I mentioned, to the transactional level of the data. This just shows the overall scope of the internal reporting. Again, you're not limited to financial data. We have a lot of use cases where we see folks pulling in permits as a general next step. We use public safety data, EMS runs, basically, any of the various pieces of data that you have out there in the city, we can pull in, and you can create interactive reports off of it. Now, a big piece of this is obviously communicating out to the public. And what we like to do is allow you to do that in a few different ways. And one of them is not just putting a data dump out there, but having narrative stories. So this is an example of Elk Grove, the City of Elk Grove released for their budget fact sheet. And as you can see, with OpenGov, we call this our narrative story builder, you can leverage videos to have a mayor's update or a counselor's update. You can put narrative information, and then you can leverage the graphical interpretations of your data that already exists in OpenGov to pull that in to tell the story of, in this case, the annual budget. Now, what's good, you can see, you can, you can show where your property taxes go to. And the other piece of this is understanding what the community thinks of this. So we have another tool that is interactive, where it's a surveying tool, that you can put within these stories, that you can actually get the opinion of the community back. In this instance, Elk Grove is giving their community a budgeting exercise to see how their priorities line up with what the council and the city is doing. Couple of other examples of this narrative reporting, we see City of Ashland has a frequently asked questions story. And again, you can set this up a number of different ways, where everything is housed in one area, and as you kind of click in, it will bring you to the underlying data. And this underlying data that I speak about, I'll show you right here. So this is out of the City of Kalamazoo, Michigan. This is their 2019 proposed budget, and this is how they've communicated that with their citizens. You can see they put some narrative information about what they're trying to do, and they've used some interactive graphics as well. Now, if you're, if you want to dig into that data a bit, you can allow the community to go into what we call a transparency portal. And in this transparency portal, this takes you to the underlying data. You can also see, when you first come into these, it's set up so it tells people what they can do. So you can actually set this up with training as well, where it takes folks in, if it's their first time in, it takes them click by click through this system, so folks understand what they're looking at and know how to use it. And that's not just for the public piece of this as well, this is also for the internal piece. So if department heads have a question about how to enter their budget, we have tutorials that will click by click take them through each piece of it on the screen. So as you can see here, here's the underlying report for Kalamazoo. And you can set these up for a number of different issues. We have folks doing these for the annual bond issuances in the city, talking about capital projects, showing the principal and interest, and allows them to filter it and sort through multiple different ways, if they want to look at the interest rates or basically anything else. Last example I want to show is how folks are also using, this narrative storytelling feature is not just for the public facing. We have a lot of folks that use this for internal reporting as well. And just one example is out of Minneapolis. Actually, in Suffolk County, New York, we're doing it as well. We're managing all of their capital improvement projects using OpenGov and the narrative reporting feature. And they set this up so you can see any particular project, you can see all the various project details. We have mapping functionality capability, so you can use this not just for capital project mapping, but you could map permits issued. You can map basically anything that you want to look at. And what's great is that you can embed these charts, graphs, and interactives into the And then you could also, if you'd like to release this out to the public, you can include a surveying feature, which will allow you to basically get the public pulse of that as well. So is there any questions I can answer? I know that was a lot, pretty quickly.
I have a question. Do you have an example of a, say, department? Do you have an example of a department, what a budget would look like for any department?
Absolutely, sure. So as you can see in the budgeting tool here, there's various departmental proposals. And you can split this out, it's very flexible as to how you want your process to flow. So if you want to, you can have multiple departmental proposals for the same department, or you can keep them all general in one. So for example, for your police department, if you click into this, this would be the main page where the police, you know, the police chief can put the justification for the budget, attach any supporting documents, and then the expenses are automatically pulled in. So you can see, I've set this up to split out salary and benefits from police department operations and any one-time expenses. And as you go in this, you'll see that all the information is pre-populated. So this pulls directly from your chart of accounts. It will pre-populate all the various departmental expenses. It pulls up actual numbers from prior years, and it will allow you to start with your last year's budget, if that's what you want to do. Your last year's approved budget will be your base.
Can you go back to screen and go to revenues?
You'd like to see the revenue tab or a revenue projection?
Yes, the revenue tab for the police department in this example.
So there's no revenue set up here, but it's very easy to do.
So everything would be for that department, everything would be listed, expenses, salaries, revenues, everything would be right there in that tab, in that section?
You can set it up like that. Typically, what we see in practice is that your revenues are not going to be identified specific to the police department. So what you'll have is what we call a revenue projection, and that's actually found on the main page here. And you would project all of your various revenues for the town. So you can see there's an example of an FY '20 revenue forecast. And as you go through this, you'll see the various types of revenue that the city, whether it's tax revenue, city services, that's typically how we see it in practice. And then what we'll see on the individual departmental forms would be if the police, say, received a grant, that would be entered in on the revenue tab in that police department form, and you can kind of track the grant funding against departmentally. But the system's flexible enough that you can set up revenue by department if that's how you want to do.
And the public has access to this as well?
No. This is internal, so these are the, this is, this is internal to the City of East Providence. This is where you'll actually bill your budget. This would be where your department heads or anybody else who's responsible for filling out departmental proposals would go. The mayor, finance director, managers would have oversight. So city council could be granted oversight, where you could then go in and have this 360-degree view of the budgeting process and be able to see not only, and be able to see every departmental projection that is entered in for that particular budget cycle, who's entered it, and what effect it's going to have on the overall budget.
So what is the public accessibility, Dan?
So the public accessibility really is determined by, by you all. Typically, what we see is a release of these budget stories, which will affect, summarize the various departments, what they're spending their money on, put some narrative information around them, and release that in that narrative story form. Which would be similar to something like in City of Kalamazoo. And you'd be able to use the graphics to, to show departmental spending, kind of go and dig into that underlying data.
Mr. President, a question. Is it, is it more templates, or is it very user-defined friendly?
So...
Both?
What's great about this is it is really plug and play, so, but it also has flexibility. So for like the stories, for example, you can, we have templates, so if you want to kind of leverage what other cities and towns are doing, you like something that you see, you can templatize it and use that. You can build your own templates, and we have some stock ones as well. However, it's also set up that if you can want to really be creative, there's various ways you can set these stories up. Same with reporting and dashboards, they're all in that style, but you're really limited by what data that you have in terms of, you know, what you can do with it. And the great thing is for the budgeting aspect of this, why we're able to get up and running so quickly, is because it really is built for exactly how municipalities budget. So the screen that you're looking at here is going to be the same screen that you're actually going to see in use. This is not going to look any different, it's just going to have your data, your proposals, but there's enough flexibility that's built in that we can accommodate anybody's kind of tweaks and processes.
Thank you.
If I may, please. And it's David.
Yes, sir.
David. Can you talk a little bit about the interface with any kind of purchasing system? So I mean, I don't know how familiar you are with the city's purchasing system, it's long in the tooth. How might we expect this system to interface with that one?
Sure, so in general, what we do in terms of... So in general, what we do in terms of interfacing with existing systems is what we do, we build APIs. So we have integrations, and that allows us to pull data in. We'd have to look at that system exactly, but we, we integrate with, you know, we kind of build it out ourselves and we have that functionality. So I'm sure if there's, if there's data that's held within the purchasing system that we'd like to capture and reports in OpenGov, we'd absolutely be able to capture.
You wouldn't anticipate any difficulty, whatever the system might be?
No. I mean, at worst case, if it's something that really is, you know, an outdated technology. So the first thing that we're going to do is we're going to integrate with your existing accounting system. We're going to pull that data in automatically. It can grow from there. So for example, this purchasing system, if sometimes because of the nature of the data, it makes more sense to not have a live integration, it's just more cost-effective because you may not need to update it every single day. And for that, what we do is we set up very easy manual data dumps that somebody would do by pressing a button. So there's multiple ways that you can go about it.
Okay. So you mentioned training, you know, kind of the on-screen click-by-click training for, you know, users. And I guess that would be, that would be role-based, right? I mean, depending on?
Yes.
What about for our folks that are going to be kind of in the weeds of using the system on a day-to-day basis? Do you envision any kind of training to kind of bring them up to speed so we can put the system in place quickly?
Absolutely, yeah. We take a real hand-holding approach. You know, we recognize that. So in our engagements, what we'll, what we'll do is with every single engagement, we have a dedicated live person, they're a customer success manager. So we have all the regular support protocols that any software application will have. But we also have a dedicated person, this particular one lives up near me in Massachusetts. And she is the person that, everybody has her cell phone number, her email, and there's two or three people that you will always deal with that will help people kind of ad hoc as you go if you need help building out a budget proposal, creating a report, a dashboard. We take a real hand-holding approach. And we also take an approach of train the trainers. So in every instance, we usually can identify a couple of folks that really excel at the system. And what we do is we kind of empower them to be the resident experts.
That makes sense. Should the city decide to move from its current code of accounts to another code of accounts, say, a universal, uniform code of accounts?
Yep.
The system wouldn't be an obstacle to doing that, right?
No, no. So what we do is, not to get too into the weeds, but we, we will take your existing chart of accounts, bring it in. And we have the ability to, we call it mapping your chart of accounts. You, there are folks who want to do just what you're describing. And for that reason, we have the ability to allow you to determine how you want your chart of accounts to be mapped in OpenGov. And if that ever changes along the way, we can remap it. It's not anything you're locked into.
Regarding accounts payable and payroll, should we expect, you know, the display information that we see, you know, on a, say, a month-to-month basis? Should we expect that those would be more synchronized than kind of what we're seeing right now, or?
Yeah, so for, let's take AP, for example. Do you do a monthly AP run, or is it by, is it every two weeks?
Which is it, Malcolm? Weekly?
So this is actually, so if you're looking right now at a monthly AP report, this is actually going to allow you to have more access quicker. So what we'll do is, that data will be live, so as soon as those AP payments post in your general ledger system, that following morning, they're going to be in the OpenGov reports. So you'll be able to know every week, you'll have a fresh set of AP data that you can look at in your reports.
Last question, if I may, sorry to hammer you over.
Yes, no, please.
Kind of a nerd question, but I saw, you know, you're building, you know, the, the actual versus projections with your, a great tool. Are there options as to how to build those projections? I mean, like standard regression analysis, you do different algorithms, et cetera, or?
Absolutely. So we recognize that there are going to be a lot of accounts, maybe like an insurance account, you pay 90% of it in July or whatever, beginning of your fiscal year. That doesn't necessarily mean it's overspent. So what we do is we give, we have a few options built into the system, where you can look at either, you know, two-year average, three-year average, four-year average. Or we also have kind of a, it's called the OpenGov recommended analysis, which is a, it's basically an algorithm that we built out ourselves that is, that will take your spending and try to come up with a, you know, the appropriate analysis.
To follow up on that, if I may, do you find that most of your customers use the budgeting tool or don't use a budgeting tool, or is it kind of half and half, or?
Yes, so right now, we're over 200 customers that use our budgeting suite. And to give you an idea, we rolled the budgeting suite out in data form, like probably three years ago. So our early adopters were kind of on there from the beginning. But in the last year to two years, we've had tremendous growth. So all of our, most of our existing customers, if they're not, you know, they started with more of a transparency, citizen engagement-based solution. And right now, we're in the process of educating them about the new budgeting offerings as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other further questions from the council at this time?
One last one, one or two last ones. The staff that we may be, that we might have access to, like the woman in Massachusetts or others, is there a fee every time someone here would call that person?
Nope. It's, it's built into your contract.
Built into it, okay.
She's there to help you and ensure that everybody's getting the most out of the system.
Okay. And what other communities in Rhode Island have this?
So we're actually, we're in Newport from a citizen engagement standpoint. So they do a transparency portal out of Newport. Westbury, Rhode Island, for the, they used our budgeting suite, and they actually have an issued budget story and budget book as well. They had a major staffing change over the last year. So I think they were in the, in the midst of getting them back up to speed. Their entire finance department, I believe, transitioned. We're also in Middletown, Rhode Island as well. As we're based out of San Francisco, a lot of our, we've kind of grown, we have a ton of customers out west, in west of the Mississippi, the New England area, which I'm responsible for, is kind of in a growth state right now. But we do have plenty of customers in all of New England that are using our budgeting suite. And a lot of folks have just joined as well.
Thank you. I have a question, please.
Yes.
What would this, what does a system cost? Is it based on the size of the municipality or different tiers to the system itself?
Yeah, so it really is based on the size of the municipality. So, you know, it goes by budget tiers. And the cost, we can, how do I say this? You can do this piecemeal, I guess. But, you know, we've been really upfront about wanting to work with the city and, and try to come up with a price point that works to get you all the functionality.
Any other further questions for the gentleman?
Yep, I just have one. So you had spoken about being able to integrate other programs with this one. So currently, the city has, or just kind of got up and running within the last year, its permitting and how it's relating all the departments, so fire, planning, planning department. Is this the same program, or is this would be just an addition, a new program to what we already currently have?
So what we did envision, when I mentioned permitting, you'd use your permitting system for doing it all. But what we do is, so if you right now want to get a report about what permits were issued, you would probably have to go print that out from the permitting system. Depending on what their reporting options are, maybe a lot of times you end up doing a data dump into Excel and formulating a chart. Okay, that might take a couple of days. What we're able to do is we take that information, have it in OpenGov, and you'll have a standing report that will automatically update as new data refreshes, to look at it in any way that you really want to look at it.
Okay, so this essentially wouldn't be taking over the current program that we have in place?
Not the function, but for access of the information and reporting out on it, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Well, and the other great thing is that, just to let you know, is that when you join OpenGov, you become part of like the network. So those 2,000 other municipalities, there's community groups, there's also a map where what you can do is you can see the reporting that they're releasing out to their communities as well. And that's a huge, huge benefit to folks when they join is because they can look at what people all over the country are doing and kind of take ideas and pick and choose what you like.
Well, thank you, sir. I'm sure this isn't the last we'll hear from you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
With that being said, still in communications, I'll give the gentleman a little bit of time to move up and we can move right on to the next item, please.
Snow removal and safety, Frederica, I believe it's Afra?
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'd like to say hi to the mayor and hello to the city council men and women.
Hello, thank you.
And my name is Frederica Athanas. I live at Taunton Plaza on Weldon Avenue. And it has been brought to my attention, there are 100 apartments in that building. And a lot of people walk.
That's right, yeah.
A lot of people use motorized or hand-worked wheelchairs, walkers, balance canes. I'm legally blind, I use a white cane of Independence. And the sidewalk issue has been just deplorable for many, many years. I have let Anna Susan know this. I have let the mayor's office know this. I have let Mark Fattato know this, and we've been, and I had a conversation with Councilwoman Kahoon. And I would like to get it set up so there'll be neighborhood pride. I'm not trying to take care of the whole city, it's Six Corners. It's a little village. It ends at Taunton Avenue Bakery and Family Dollar. Just to, as a reasonable accommodation with the Americans with Disabilities Act, I should be able to walk down the sidewalk, use the crosswalks and the crosslights to go to Moonstar Restaurant if I would like to, across the street to Family Dollar to get my water, and then return on the other side, going by Visiting Angels and a few residences. Now, over the years, I have compiled a map, and I walked with my neighbor Wayne Travis, my sighted friend, who also is a walker. And we drew a map, I drew the map, it's terrible. But I, I had him tell me the house numbers, the business numbers. And there have been a lot of complaints this year. We haven't had very much snow at all. But as far as people taking, you know, having neighborhood pride and taking care of their sidewalks, it's, it's minimum, if not at all. And the argument that I get from Town Mart, he's a stickler, he won't do the crosswalk because he said it's a state highway. State takes care of it. Nope. I told him no. It's a city, city sidewalk, the city takes care of it. Nope. You rent the property, you maintain, you know, the parking lots are always clear, the driveways are always clear. And one thing that I brought up to Mark's attention is that when you go to the crosswalk, there's a great big, I guess the electrical box? I don't know what it is, but it's a big box. And like, if you try to cross at Moonstar Restaurant, the crosswalk is here, the big box is there, and you have to walk all the way around to press the button to cross the street. It's very inconvenient. But the point is, is that nobody shovels that area to access the crossing light. And it's impossible to cross Taunton Avenue. It's nearly impossible with the crossing light, but it's totally impossible without the crossing light. And Moonstar did terrible. They have curb cuts. The width of the sidewalk that's being shoveled will not accommodate a wheelchair or an elderly person with a walker. I'm a strong advocate for seniors and people with disabilities. And that's pretty much the population in my building. And I get complaints that the crosswalks aren't done. Family Dollar has two crosswalks, and they don't care. And I've had conversations, tried to have nice conversations with them, and they just go, it's a corporate issue. So I don't know who to turn to, except the city. And I had a conversation with the man in Moonstar, and he got pretty angry with me, and he called me a liar, and he came with his fists flying after, after me, ran me out of the store. So I'm not going to deal with him, I'll let you people. And I value my life and my limbs. And he called me a liar. And I, you know, I'm too proud, the people in my building are too proud, we're done walking in the gutter. It's unsafe. The conversation that I had with Councilwoman Kahoon was about the kids walking in the street. It's the same thing. Nobody cares. And I think you've got to put some teeth in to the fines and the checking process. Because it's storms that we've had this year, it storms, it's one or two inches, and it's all mucked up. And then somebody might shovel a little bit, but by the time, because I've, I've been working closely with Eric in City Hall, and he's had his sidewalk superintendents, sidewalk inspectors go out and check to see what's going on. And there's a lot of stuff that's not getting done, even with the mild snow last winter that we've had. And we're getting more snow in the morning. So I come to you, representing the seniors and people with disabilities at Taunton Plaza and throughout the neighborhood in Six Corners. I mean, I'd like to start a program, Six Corners Strong, you know, that we can do this if we all work together. I owned a home in Pawtucket for 15 years. And I told both of my kids to take care of Mr. and Mrs. Roy on the corner, and to take care of, and I'd be out there shoveling. And I lived on the corner, so I had curb cuts. I had two, two or three house lots to shovel, and it always got done. And I lived on Arvis's Boulevard, and I know everybody complains that the state truck comes down Taunton Avenue, Route 44, and there goes all the work they just did. So I don't know what the answer is, but we need help from the city to get this ordinance rewritten, put some teeth into it, raise the fines, you know, let people know that the ordinance has changed, it's been updated. In addition to, but not limited to, curb cuts and crosswalks would be some very good language that would be in the ordinance. And inform the residents and the businesses that this is the way it's going to be, and it's going to be taken seriously. Because I, I can't be trapped in the house. You know, we, we almost become prisoners depending on each other for simple things like toilet paper, because we can't get to the store.
Ms. Affrent, my name's Robert Brittle. I could tell you that I had multiple conversations with Councilwoman Kahoon as well about this. And I know he's been working with Mr. Fattato with respect to a new ordinance, and it's a lot, a lot stricter than the one that we currently have right now. And if you want to elaborate, just, just a little bit and just discuss.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Hello, Frederica, good to meet you, after talking to you. Yeah, Mark and I have been going back and forth on that ordinance, and it contains a lot of the elements that we spoke about on the phone. You know, Mark kind of took the first pass on that, and he addressed a lot of the things like curb cuts and crosswalks, clearing the curb line when you're at the, you know, at an intersection, you know, to make sure that people can step off, you know, into the street without climbing over a mountain of snow.
Right.
Before getting to the next sidewalk. So those are all things that we've tried to address. We've also tried to address the, the fact that sometimes there's an ambiguity in who's responsible for clearing a particular bit of sidewalk. I think the old ordinance said something along the lines of owner, property manager, or occupant. And that leaves a lot of room for somebody else, just, you know, the, the example that you cited to say, you know, point the finger, it's, it's someone else's problem. So I think we've tried to eliminate that and say it's, you know, it's the owner or the person responsible for managing the property, period. Crosswalks, we, we addressed crosswalks. Wanted to make sure that the, the width for getting onto a crosswalk is the same as the width that allows you to walk down the, the street, right? We want to make sure that no one just makes one tiny little narrow shovel pass down the street, right? We, I think we used three feet was, you know, the three feet wide path. That was what we used to, to make sure that, you know, folks can get through. And then, as you mentioned, you know, I've got a particular soft spot. And then, as you mentioned, you know, I've got a particular soft spot in my heart for school areas and school sections. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, folks who live within and around school zones are particularly attentive. And they need to be particularly attentive because we have 5,000 kids converging on these buildings, these 12 buildings, every single day at the same time, along with buses and cars. So what I proposed, and I've actually proposed it, and we're not going to take vote on first passage tonight, we're going to do that next time, but I'm throwing out a draft tonight to the council to take a look at, I've actually proposed setting up school zones within a 200-foot abutment of those, you know, public and private schools, and doubling the fines that are established within those zones to make sure that people are really attentive. So those are the kinds of things that we've kind of been talking about. Again, we're still in the draft stage. I've also taken the ordinance and I've, I've let the public know that, you know, we're trying to draft this. So I'm happy for any and all feedback. I'd like this to be a collaborative process because, you know, I can't, I can't see everything just through my own experience. So certainly happy to have perspective from others as well.
Okay.
So I wanted, if I may, through the chair, thank you, Federica, for coming up and speaking on this. This is, as most people know, not Federica's first time we've been dealing with this issue. Multiple seasons, trying to address.
Running a problem.
Yeah, trying to address it with administration continuously. And I think it's great that we're going to amend the ordinance and make some revisions that pertain to the ADA, along with school. I think one of the problems, not problems, but one of the things that impacted is, it's good to have a good ordinance that fits all the criteria that we're looking for, but the implication in, in enforcing is the other key to it. So we can have ordinances, but if we're not taking active roles in making sure that people are being held to that standard, doesn't defeat the problem that we currently have. And I think that was one of the major problems that we were having. We had, you know, kind of a, you know, semi reasonable ordinance in place that was kind of generic, but there was no reinforcement in that ordinance. And it became difficult for residents and business owners to do what they needed to do because of, you know, again, those big mounds of snow. It becomes very difficult for people to break down four to five feet on a corner of snow to shovel that through. So I think education, like I had mentioned before with the previous administration, on, you know, making sure that the department who's doing the shoveling, you know, the DPW, that they're not making it harder for the residents who already have to do these curb cuts as it is. I did mention that I, I spoke with Mark multiple times, I have not spoken with Councilwoman Kahoon. But putting into place also in the ordinance, the people or the residents who are elderly and cannot do their own properties, that doesn't mean they're not going to get a violation. They'll give them an opportunity. I think it's important for them to have an opportunity to say why they, their property wasn't shoveled. Maybe they have a medical condition that precludes them from being able to shovel their property. And in that case, we would provide resources to them, maybe a group of neighborhood kids who are looking for volunteer hours to help clean up that area. So giving them, you know, coming up with a solution to address why they weren't able to clear off. Now, obviously, we're talking about a corporation or a corporate entity. There's really no excuse why they can't. They're, they're paying somebody probably to come and remove, and I know it gets busy in the season because everybody has people out there shoveling. But we do have to maintain safety for our students and our residents. Like Mr. Councilman Kahoon says, there's a lot of students that come, walk to school or are walking home to after-school programs. Taunton Avenue is very busy and dangerous. I remember last year, one of the residents at Taunton Avenue Plaza was hit by a vehicle because of the snow mounds. The corner was too high, the cars can't see, their engine forward, cars are coming. So it's, it's very dangerous. And I'm glad that, you know, again, you've come forward and that we're working collaboratively to get something with substance. And again, taking it a step further, it's really important that we come up with a plan on who's going to be reinforcing it. So I think some of the language that I've mentioned to our solicitor was putting into place who can send out those violations. You know, the police department, the DPW, who notices them. And then, because as it stands right now, minimum housing is in charge of all these violations or keeping up with them. And it's one person for a community of our size. And so that's not really feasible for one person to maintain that, but working collaboratively. And I think the mayor's administration agrees that, you know, we can do better at coming up with a plan to address it. So being the first step, I think it's great that we're working towards this. And I commend Councilwoman Kahoon for joining in the battle, because it has been a yearly conversation that I've been trying to work on, and it, you know, hasn't seemed to get any better.
Yep. I think I've been at this for five years.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I'm clear, I just say thank you for coming forward and speaking and letting us know.
With that being said, moving right along, still in communications.
Item C, the party is not here for item C. Public comment, moving on to public comment, there is no public comment during this meeting.
So no one's here for item C in communications?
That's correct.
Okay. And no public comment, okay?
No public comment.
Next item, please.
Appointments for vote for item A, that is, the person has decided not to.
That's correct.
Move forward with that.
Okay.
So we're moving to item B.
Jump past item A, right on, moving next to item B.
Christopher S. LaRue, Two Speaker Drive, East Providence Public Library trustees. The term to end is for 2/2022, should he get voted in. And he is sponsored by Councilman Murato tonight.
Has he been, he's, he's properly applied and meets all the criteria and?
He has properly followed the ordinance to a T.
Okay. I move to have a council take a vote. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Kahoon. Would anyone like to second that motion to accept Christopher LaRue?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, like Councilwoman Souza. Roll call, roll please.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Councilman Kahoon?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
And Council President Britto?
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is C, it's Jennifer Griffith. For the record, the S should not be out on her last name, Jennifer Griffith, 65th, 65 Plymouth Road, East Providence Waterfront District Commission. Term to end, should she be voted in, would be April 2nd, 2023, and she is sponsored by Councilman Kahoon tonight.
So I'd just like to first say, Jen is here, you say hello. So I make this nomination, bring this nomination for the council's consideration with a great deal of pride. I think we know that it's very difficult to get people who are community motivated to take on a task like, you know, this. The waterfront commission is obviously a big, big deal in our city, and the decisions that they make there are going to impact our city for a long, long time. I think it's even more rare to find that unique person who brings a, a skill set that makes us, makes it a better commission, if you will. I think everybody brings something, but, you know, in this particular case, you know, Jen is an attorney. She is an East Providence High School graduate. I came to know her during my time, I mean, we kind of grew up coming through the same school system, but professionally came to know her during the year I spent working at DCYF and came to know Jen through her position as the child advocate for the state of Rhode Island. She is quite literally often the last best hope for some of our most at-risk and, you know, threatened kids. And so what she does on a day-to-day basis makes an amazing impact on the state and on the community. So I couldn't think of a, of a better person. I was thrilled to find out that she was interested. I, I make this, you know, this nomination with disappointment with, I mean, this is probably the thing that I'm most proud of, you know, since we got going. So I'm very excited about this, as you can tell, so.
Is that a motion?
I would make a move to approve.
So we do have a motion.
I would like to note one more thing. I think Jennifer will be the first voting female member of the waterfront commission. And I, I think that that is important for us to keep in mind that, you know, these commissions are to set the tone for our entire community. They really should reflect the demographic and the perspective of our community. So I, I think it behooves all of us to put some thought into who is going on, on these, these commissions and these boards, you know, and specifically making sure that they're representative of the folks that, you know, they're, they're working for. Yes.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. President. So we do have a motion on the floor.
Second that motion.
Councilman.
Thank you. I would also like to add a second to that, and I would like to claim precedence over you, Councilman Kahoon, because I knew Ms. Griffith before you did. Going back is, with, with some athletics in the city and her family years ago, but also when she was a student at East Providence High School, like yourself, she's a very young person. And I was pleased to see that you were nominating her. When I saw her name on the agenda, I said, what better person? And I know, as Councilwoman Souza had mentioned before, there's a commission that probably could have some women on it, I guess it doesn't have any or didn't. So no better person than I can think of. Jen is well-respected statewide and beyond Rhode Island. And being a townie graduate, he just adds a little bit more to it, and being an attorney, and there are so many more pluses. So this is a great addition to the waterfront commission, and I add my voice to Councilman Kahoon and Councilman Murato, and I'm sure we all join in approving this decision.
Okay.
So that's a lengthy second.
With that being said, roll call, roll please.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Councilman Kahoon?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
And Council President Britto?
Aye.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Congratulations. That concludes appointments for, appointments from council members. Moving right on to the next item, please.
Councilmember Communication, discussion only, Pierce Stadium Infrastructure Concerns, Council Vice President Rodericks.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'll keep this very brief. This is just a follow-up on the last council meeting and at the president's direction, I kept this active. And I think we're making progress. Today, the mayor and myself did a physical tour of, of the stadium, and we wanted to see firsthand, I want to thank, I see Mayor De Silva probably, probably left, I'm sure he had a long day. But we wanted to see firsthand, and we did see a lot of improvements. I won't run them all down, we've talked about them before. The bathrooms are looking great after a few years of neglect. The, working on the handicapped accessibility, the monies have been set aside, there's been a study commissioned to, to do that. And the clerk's office has also been keeping, keeping us, keeping me apprised of, of the progress. So without running down everything else, I would just say that there's one big concern, even after the mayor and I left, I got a, received a call from the Pierce Field manager, and he sent me a picture, I'll just keep this here, and I can send it down the dais. But there was, and I know Councilwoman Souza would like to see this, because at the, I can pass it down, at the Towny Pride Park, there was some vandalism minutes after we left, a kid riding by on a bicycle smashed one of the brand-new lanterns that looked so nice there. And our concern is that there has been some money allocated for security, but we haven't, we haven't brought it in yet. The gentleman, we used to pay someone very minimal dollars, few hours, I think it was 25 hours a week, there was some security, a person to roam around and be a presence, rather than just sending someone there after something happens. I'm not saying that will prevent a broken lantern all the time, but I don't like the idea of having a multimillion-dollar athletic complex that we've always been so proud of in this city and letting it sit there unsupervised. It doesn't make any sense to me. We, as I said at the last meeting, let's either let it go or fix it. And I think we are fixing, we're getting there. There has been money allocated for security cameras, and we haven't quite got there yet. I know people are working on it, and I'm not trying to throw any stones at all, I just want to move ahead forward and, and be positive. So when, I got that picture late today, the conversation was, things are great, they're moving along, but what we, our big concern right now is security at the stadium. I mean, when there's an event there, we have to send Pierce Field staff, little things, you have to open the bathrooms. You can't have games and teams from other cities and towns in the state coming to the field and have parents with children that need to use the bathroom and, and they're locked. So the security guy would be there to open and then close it later at night. So I, I don't know what the quick fix is on this. I'm thinking that maybe, Mr. President, if the, if we could just send, and Mr. Fattato is here, so we could probably just do it verbally, if, if we can just try to fast-forward the security issues, Mark. If what I'm being told is true, if money's been allocated for cameras, and there's some money for a security person, the security guard doesn't have to be an armed guard, it was just a security person who was there would help open up and close the facility. I'll repeat myself for one comment I made at the last meeting. A lot of the public stadiums in the state that have increased their facilities, Cranston with the new turf, and of course, the private schools and places, you can't walk onto those fields right off the street without someone coming over to you and saying, can I help you? Why are you here? Our Pierce Stadium, the doors are open all the time, and we encourage that. We had, there were people walking today, the stadium, which is great, that's what it's there for. But we need some help, somebody's got to be there to keep the place from deteriorating. And it's starting to look great again. So I think we're, we're on the, we're on the move. So if we can just fast-forward, Mark, the security issue, laptop computers, the internet's coming, they had no internet there. So the manager is going to get that in the office now. And I think we're, we're on our way. So that basically would conclude my, my update on, on the stadium. I think we just need to keep on top of it. And as I said, and I want to thank Councilman Kahoon for agreeing with me, this is not a frivolous attempt. This is a piece of East Providence. This is a multimillion-dollar facility built by the Workers' Progress Administration, you know, back around World War II, the WPA. This is a piece of history here, and it's absolutely gorgeous, and we need to keep it that way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen, and keep us informed with respect to what's going on and the progress you've made over the next several weeks.
Thank you, I will.
Adam Clark, next item, please.
Next item is discussion only, East Providence Senior Center slash Rec Center, Council Vice President Rodericks.
I'll just dovetail into the prior conversation, and I did attend the mayor's meeting the other day at the senior center to, to just be there and listen. And it was well-attended, probably 150 people were there, the room, room was full. And obviously, there are a couple of people that don't want any changes there, but I think the meeting went well. By the end of the meeting, most people took the mayor at his word when he said, I am not going to change any programs here. And of course, I'm referring to moving some of the rec center that we now have in the building built in 1930 on Bullock's Point Avenue, the old Riverside Junior High, which was abandoned as a school in 1965, and they built the new Riverside Junior High School that now stands as the middle school on Forbes Street. So it was old back then, and it's old now, so old that we don't any longer allow children in that old gym in that part of the building. And we've paid, as the mayor discovered, over the last four to five years, $300,000 in utility fees, custodial fees, our share, we don't own the building anymore, we've given it to EB cap, but we have to pay for some usage in it. And I, I think it was a good decision to get out of there. It's an old building that is a trap, and we don't allow kids. And I've been in there many, many times. And I've been in there many, many times, been there with my own kids, with grandkids now, and it's not a good place. So this is a temporary fix of going to the Rec Center. The Rec Center Director and some of the programs have already been there for four or five years. So I think we can coexist somewhat and come up with a permanent plan, but I just wanted to give that update, and I commend the mayor for going into a crowd of 150 people, we're probably most, we're not happy to see him at the time, but at the end of the meeting, I think their answer was, we appreciate what you said, we'll hold you to your word, as will I, and we'll get there. So I think that went well.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item, please.
Discussion Only, Water Supply Project with Bristol County Water, Council, Councilman Vice President Rodericks.
So three's the charm, is it? I have these three.
The cutoff after this.
And the cutoff. Thanks. And I just wanted to, I think some of us discussed this the other day when we had the workshop, and we have some big decisions to make on this project, and I think they're good and positive for the city. So I throw it out tonight to quickly ask that I think we need to start to schedule this process, a public hearing, public workshop. The longer we wait, we have one water supply to the city of East Providence, for those who don't know, one pipe that comes under the Providence River from a point in Cranston, and it's ancient, and it lies on the bottom of the Providence River under a shipping channel. At one point, there was a rusting bridge teetering over it, which could have fallen, and they were finally able to get that bridge out. If that pipe goes, we have no water. So there are some plans and some things to look into, and I'm not here to make a decision on it tonight, but I think we have to start at some point. So I don't know how we would proceed, Mike. I don't know if you have a suggestion on when we would start the schedule or anything?
So I leave it up to...
Do we leave it up to the mayor's office? I don't know.
No, I think that ball is now in your court, and I would, with this, with your concerns, and I know the council also has concerns based upon the workshop, we do need to start scheduling either work sessions to either go over what was presented, or to have a more formal discussion as to what option that you want to portake, both for this and the sewer rate issue, I might add. I know you didn't bring that up as well. So I'm leaving it up to Communications, and I can talk to the council president and members of the council, but I think the better way to do it would be to have at least one workshop on it, and then you can make a decision after that on both the issues on the sewer. And just so you know, I wasn't aware of this, but the sewer rates are set by ordinance, so just keep that, so there's a timeframe for us to pass that as well.
With that being said, just to add to this conversation, I think how we should start off is by contacting Bristol Water County, or Bristol County Water, and see what dates they have available.
To come.
To come for their presentation.
Okay.
And then present that to the council, and then we can see what our schedules look like. So if we can get multiple times and dates from there.
Sure. Would you like me to do that?
Yeah.
Are you thinking a separate workshop, or should we do, try to do like the next council meeting, see if they can come in?
I was thinking primarily probably a separate council. Separate, because, I mean, you're going to have things on agenda, and then you're going to have the public. I'm sure it's going to be a public forum, so public's going to be up there. It might take a little longer than we anticipate or expect, and to couple that with a council member, we can be here till 11, 12 o'clock midnight.
Mm-hmm. No, I agree.
Councilman.
That's my thoughts, but...
If I may.
Please.
So I liked the workshop, I mean, I wasn't able to attend. I did get there at the last five minutes because of my work schedule, and it was something that was put together last minute, so unfortunately, I couldn't make accommodations. But I think it's important for us to do it in a special meeting, as opposed to a workshop in a conference room. I think the setting lends for people to be, to come in and talk to us better, as opposed to going into a workshop. I think when people think workshop, they're thinking it's more informal, maybe not so, something that they don't really have to engage in as much, where if we say it's a special meeting regarding, you know, our sewers, sewer rate, and our, the Bristol Water, County Water, that they're probably more inclined to tune into the broadcast, to come into the setting and really engage in the conversation. I think that's just my personal opinion, I think it'd be better in a special meeting.
I couldn't agree with you anymore, and I think this would be a primary area to have that, as opposed to, like Councilwoman said, in one of the conference rooms, because you never know what type of crowd we're going to, you know, when you're talking about raising rates, people become concerned, but, you know, we need to put it on the table and let them know exactly what's going on. So if we can come up with some dates that are suitable for Bristol Water County and the council here, and give the public more than enough time, I think that would be great.
In addition to that, I'm sorry, I think it's important and incumbent on the administration to really promote and let the community know as a whole. I mean, granted, we get a few hundred that watch these things on Facebook and on the TV, but we have almost 50,000 residents in the city that are water payers, you know, sewer payers. So I think it's important that maybe the mayor's administration would, on a monthly billing process, this is something that can go out in the monthly water bill as a notification. Coming up, this council is having, you know, they're considering a rate increase. Important to attend, make it bold, make it something that people are aware, because again, these are important decisions that are going to affect people's finances, budgeting in their own personal finances. So I think it's important that we really put it out there on a continuous and not just, you know, it's on the city website. It went, you know, there's always things that are changing on that website or on the Facebook, and I don't want it to get lost in the rest of the communication and great things that are happening in the city, because I want people to come out, good, bad, or indifference, I want them to be aware and hear it, so everybody gets a fair shot at it.
And also, if we can make the moderator of that presentation that we had available for this presentation as well, that would be good. Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you. Next item, please.
Discussion Only, the 160th Anniversary of Rumford Baking Powder, the Greater Rumford Bake Off.
This is more of a reminder, as I'd indicated two meetings ago, that on Sunday, May 12, which is Mother's Day, the Historical Committee is hosting the 160th Anniversary of the Rumford Bacon Powder. So there will be, for those who like to bake, it's a competition. First prize is, I think, some money that's going to be given to first prize. Second prize and third prize is going to have a trophy given, but it's going to be at Hunts Mills. They're going to have a tent out that day, it's a Sunday afternoon, so anybody who's willing to show off some of their baking skills, please join, it's open to the public. You don't have to reside in East Providence, so this is a statewide bake-off, essentially. So again, I'll put this on periodically, just to remind the public about this event. Thank you. Next item, please.
Discussion Only, Boards and Commissions, Carousel Commission, Councilman Murato.
Madam Clerk, can you explain some of the openings and who's responsible for the appointments for that board? I know you have a list there.
Absolutely. Currently, the council, the Carousel has a total of 20 members. There are eight members that are appointed by the city council. There are two at-large appointments, five alternates. There's one appointment by the mayor, and then there is the mayor or the mayor representative. I'll go through the names really quick. So the eight members, we have Azelda Fernandez, who, her expiration of term is January 15, 2021. Lisa George, 6-1, 2021. Bruce Rogers, 11-29, 2019. Stephen Costa, I am still trying to determine, there was, there was something before my time where the term changed, so we're going to get the exact date on that. We have Joan Henry Han Miller, 10-18, 2019. Michelle Raya, 6-6, 2020. Bev LaForte, 11-29, 2022. And then there is one spot that remains for one of the member appointments. There's two at-large appointments. We have Donna McMahon, June, 6-4, 2021, and Jessica Bochane, 11-1, 2019. There's five alternates. There is one that's open, and we have Tony Atton Jr., 10-17, 2019. Joanne Estrella, 10-17, 2019. Dennis Thibault, I'm sorry if I'm butchering your last name, I apologize, 7-23, 2020, and Lumina Rodriguez, 7-23, 2020. The one appointment by mayor was, is standing right now as Kim Cassie, which was expired on January 4, 2019. The mayor or mayoral representative standing right now is David Backrath. The superintendent or the representative is Tony Farah, the school committee. And the appointment of the city council appointee was decided one of the first council meetings, which was actually you, Councilman Murato. And there is an open for the appointment of Historic Properties and Study Commission. So there is definitely some, there's definitely some openings for anybody who may be interested in surveying on this commission.
Is that board currently posted?
It's always posted, it's always posted in the boards and commissions. It's, to be honest, it is hard to find. It's hard to find on the website currently. So if anybody is interested in this position, please feel free to contact me directly in the clerk's office, or you can email me, and I can get you that information, the application to fill out.
Just a quick question, Madam Clerk.
Sure.
The open appointments, are those, so the part of the eight voting members and then part of the five alternative members, are they specific to a ward? Are they open to any council member?
That's kind of the funny thing with this one. It seems, it seems that it gravitates more towards Ward Four, obviously because the Carousel is Ward Four, that makes sense. But as of right now, I have to really dig into the history a little bit more, because the appointments are a little convoluted. They're a little, they're a little convoluted is where they're standing right now.
I thought it was open, actually.
I don't, I don't think it's necessarily divided up between the council members. I think that's just something that has been in unwritten understanding, I think, of the council.
Because I believe one of the ordinances that we did is that most, if not all, boards and commissions had to represent each of the four councils, so at least four representatives in a commission or a board were from each of the wards, and then the others were subject to. So some boards have two for each, some have one, some have more.
Which really would make a lot of sense, to have the...
Specifically to eight, the open one, we don't know who that appointment belongs to?
No.
Okay, so kind of a general, anybody on the council?
Yeah.
Who's looking, who may want to appoint somebody? Okay.
Yep. I believe the last appointment was made by Council President Britto, Bev LaForte.
That was the, I think the last two was the Steve Costa and the Azelia Fernandez.
Okay. That's what it's looking like.
Yeah, not both of them by me, just one of...
No, I had, because what happened was, those two members were currently on the commission, and then they moved residency, and because we have to have proof of residency to make sure that you were appointed by the correct council member, we switched appointments.
That's what it was. That's exactly what it was. They changed wards.
So it's two per ward?
Okay.
Okay, so two per ward.
Two members from each of the four wards of the city. It's 2-5-2.
Okay. So then it'd be easy to determine which one that eighth is open to. Provide, because we, you know, we should have, the chair of that committee should have provided the proof of residency for each of the wards, so by looking at that, we should be able to determine where eight belongs.
Right, absolutely. So I'm going to do a little bit more digging, I think I'm kind of close to it, but once I get everything, I'll be sure to share that with you guys, like what happened with the Waterfront Commission and the other ones, so. But that's where everything's standing right now. There definitely is some open opportunity, we just have to figure out who is where.
Very good. Is that it, Councilman?
That's all I have, yeah.
Okay. Moving right along to the next item, please.
Okay. Discussion Only, Ward Four, Community Meeting Announcement, April 4, 2019, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, Councilman Murato.
Going to be hosting a first, which I hope to be a quarterly meeting for Ward Four. It's going to be held at the Riverside Library on Bullocks Point, Thursday night, 6:00 PM, 6:00 to 8:00. I welcome anyone from the public to come and share ideas, any grievances, and also, I would like to also share my ideas for Riverside, East Providence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item, please.
Okay. Discussion Only, Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month Update. This was one carried over from the last meeting. Councilwoman Souza.
Thank you. So as many of you know, last month was Colorectal Awareness Month. We had provided a citation proclamation from the mayor's office to our Brown Medicine Endoscopy Center here in East Providence on 62 Emerald Street. I was fortunate enough to attend the event where we presented that to the staff there, Dr. Donici, Dr. Chan, Dr. Fine, and Dr. Rich, along with their staff, were very excited to have been recognized and to bring that awareness forward. I know we did mention before the importance of being screened. The goal statewide for screening is currently at 80%. We're not quite there yet. I believe we're probably in the 25% to 30% tile below what we're looking to reach. As a, you know, healthcare professional, a registered nurse, obviously, it's important, you know, this touches personal to my career and my passion, so these are things, colorectal cancer is something that is easily prevented. There are no warning signs that allude to you may possibly have, unless you've had a family history. So screening, again, is recommended at the age of 50, and if you do have a family history, mother, father, cousin, somebody in the family that may have been diagnosed or had some precancerous indicators, then we recommend that you go for screening probably at the age of 40 to 45, because again, it's preventable, it's treatable, and it's beatable. So early prevention, early signs are able, you're able to do it. It's a simply, simple program, they have state-of-the-art equipment, it's a state-of-the-art facility, they have a wonderful nursing staff, they can do walkthroughs. I actually have some colleagues that I realized worked there that I didn't know worked there previously, so it was nice to see them again. So I do recommend, I know, maybe the mayor might not want me to say this, but he was considering, you know, now going for his own screening to promote. One of the discussions we did have was...
Watch him for me.
Yeah, was, well, you know, once he saw the tools, he kind of thought twice about it. But one of the things that we had discussed, which I think is wonderful, is incentive for our employees in the city that would maybe encourage them to get screening done. I know in my career and in my companies that I work for, we do a lot of incentives for health screening for employees, so you get, you know, whatever perk or point system to keep people up to date with their health, because obviously, when it's late in life, it costs more money on the healthcare system, more distress on you and your family, so preventative medicine is always something that we want to be aware of and kind of promote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Moving right along to the next item, please.
Discussion Only, Sewer Abatement/Rates, Councilman Murato.
So I put this on the docket, I wanted to have a discussion and ideas first with our sewer abatements. I did request the Public Safety EPW Director, Steve Kudo, to be present at this meeting. I'm not, he's not here right now, so I wanted some, and I did request per Section 2-10 of our city charter, to have a department head here, by the way. I feel that there's some answers that need to be, some questions that we need to work on, and one of which is these abatements that we give out every month. For example, 2016, we gave out 67, just over $67,000 in abatements, over $78,000 in '17, almost $90,000 in '18. Doing a little research in some of the communities in the state, Barrington, Warwick, and Pawtucket, a city the size of Warwick, they gave out $12,000 last year. They don't reimburse for pools, they don't reimburse for leaky toilets, they consider that homeowner responsibility. They give one abatement for filling of a pool, and if you have two months, they take the higher of the two, and they'll give you an abatement for that. And they encourage that, after that, you get a deduct meter, something that I always also looked into, and I wanted to ask Steve Kudo about that, the cost of the meter and how a citizen would go about acquiring a meter, and the different permits that would require to get that meter, who installs a meter, and how much savings someone who does fill a pool yearly or water their lawn would have for that citizen. Pawtucket, 2018, they gave out $46,000 in abatements. And those are abatements from roots in the sewer pipe... And those are abatements from roots, roots in the sewer pipe, which attribute law to the city. But still, again, no leaky toilets. And for abatements for yards, like say you water your lawn, it has to be more than 50% usage to get a credit. I don't know what that means, and that's why I wanted to ask Steve Kudo some of these questions tonight. I am going to put this back on the docket for the next meeting. I am going to formally request, once again, and hopefully we can get some of these answers answered. The other part of, part of the discussion I want to have is what we're going to be discussing on the sewer rates. That workshop on Monday, we got a little glimpse as to why the rates need to go up. And I get that, and I understand that. However, something as important as, once again, having the taxpayers pay more out of their pocket, the home values have been, have been reevaluated, they're going to pay more, and we're also going to pay for the upcoming high school. So I think this is a very important question, and questions that should be answered prior to having these discussions. And as I mentioned before, some of these discussions, even if we already know the answer, we still have to educate the public. For example, what would it cost the city to operate the plant ourselves as we did prior to privatizing it? What would it cost if the Navigancy Bay Commission took over that plant? What would it cost if we put it out for bid? What would it cost if we renegotiate the contract with SUEAS? And another question that came out of that meeting on Monday, can we renegotiate, or can we negotiate with Barrington? And having, they paid their fair share of what they pay to operate the plant in Riverside. I think these are all reasonable questions that should be answered. We may know the answer to some of these questions, but the public still needs to know that we did our due diligence in answering those questions first, before we start talking about sewer rates. That's just my opinion. And I understand that the gap that we're trying to close is $500,000 now, and eventually it will grow as the years go on. But I think that we owe it to the public to answer those questions first. So with that said, I don't know if the council would like to have a discussion on the abatements, or I'll put it back on the docket for the next council meeting.
Well, I mean, you can, you can keep it on the docket, of course, especially if the DPW director isn't here. However, I would just say, with respect to abatements, that's an ordinance that we have right now, and that's something that we can change as a council. Take another, again, take a really good look at that, dissect it, and going forward, perhaps make some changes to it as well.
And also, with that said, there's, I believe there's a certain percentage that we allow up to, and I believe we can increase that percentage. I don't know how beneficial that would be. That would be a question for Steve Kudo, and get some of his feedback and ideas. Maybe putting a cap on some of these abatements. Maybe we can have a number as to, you know, a reasonable number as we do with potholes, vehicle-striking potholes, and damage to rims and tires. I don't know what the ideas are. I mean, I would like to have this conversation as a council, and have the proper department head here to maybe give us some, shed some light on some of these ideas. Will it work? Will it not work? Possibly, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Just to get the ball rolling and move us towards maybe making that change in that ordinance, or adding or tweaking it.
I'm going to tell you like I told Councilman Rodrick, keep it, keep it on the docket till we get some answers to these questions.
Thank you. That's all I have for that.
Mr. President, would this be a topic for the workshop that might be scheduled as well? I mean, we can discuss it here also, but maybe at that workshop, we could broaden it into the actual rates. And I know at one time, when we were voting on some abatements, we talked about sending a letter out in one of the upcoming water bills that talks about letting people know that if you leave a faucet running, because you went away on vacation or something, you forgot a faucet somewhere, or you have a faulty plumbing inside your house, you know, check that out first, because is that really the responsibility of the rest of the taxpayers in the city, give you an abatement because you've neglected some plumbing in the house? We said we would be open to hardships, of course, but, I mean, these are, you're right, Councilman, these are some of the questions we can ask. And if we send that letter out ahead of time to every person receiving a water bill in the city, then they're going to know, gee, I better check all my faucets. And I've got that plumbing in the cellar that we never used, well, let's go check. Oh, yeah, it's running all the time. You know, so maybe that'll help tighten up.
I agree. And so I think maybe a little education, educating the public. A month ago, I thought one of my toilets were leaking, and by doing a simple, dropping a few drops of food coloring in the tank itself, and not touching that toilet for a couple of hours, it will determine whether or not you have a leak. And if that color, say you use a blue food coloring, ends up in the bowl, then you have a leak. You know, it's a simple test, maybe, it's a simple way of testing. And, but I agree, it is a homeowner's responsibility. If I leave my garden hose on after watering my garden, and the hose bursts overnight, that was at the city's responsibility. If you go away on vacation and you leave all your lights on by accident, you don't ask National Grid for a rebate, you know, or money back. Just a little common sense, I believe, so.
I think you make a great point, Councilman Rodrick. Much, I think the idea of an educational, maybe not so much a letter, but, you know, a little slip, much like National Grid does, ways to save on your water. Are you using, are you, you know, did you check your pipes? Did you check your faucets? Do you need to do an inspection? You know, have you closed, have you turned all the knobs completely off? Less time in the, you know, it's just some ways of saving. I think sometimes people need that reminder of ways to help them. I know when National Grid sends me something about, you know, they do something where they compare it to your neighbors, your 10% higher of electricity use compared to your neighbors. And so then I start rolling, thinking, well, what am I using? What have I left in? What have I plugged in that doesn't need to be plugged in? And it's just being conscious, and sometimes we forget about those things. So I think just simple reminders, and it's very inexpensive and easy to do now that we're on that monthly bill, to be able to provide those informations to the people, or just on the social media, you know, just kind of monthly updates. It doesn't hurt anybody to get a little bit of a reminder. We all need that.
So, Mr. Solicitor, maybe for future thought, when we put together this workshop, we could have a broad scope when we advertise it. So we could have discussions in these areas. We may not do, have a vote, but I think legally, if we advertise it broadly, we can at least discuss it.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Removal of Snow and Ice Ordinance Discussion, Councilwoman Cahoon.
I think we can do this fairly quickly, because we already hit on a lot of the salient points, thanks to Frederica starting off the conversation. So you should all have a copy of the current draft. And like I said, this is not for first passage. And the current draft represents what, you know, Mark and I have kind of tossed around. If you don't have it in your pocket, we can certainly get it to you. So basically, a couple of things to the Councilwoman Souza's point. The language changes are intended to try to make the ordinance more enforceable. So I think that anything that you can contribute along the lines of helping with that would be welcome. I've also, like I said, I've put out via, you know, my city Facebook page, and kind of elicited some support, and I've actually had a few residents ask for a copy and to take a look. I think that's another thing that, you know, I'd like to do during my four years on the council, is try to get folks more active in government. And we saw that, you know, the Open Gov system up here, I think that'll help. So, I mean, I'm looking for help in developing ordinances, because I certainly don't have all the answers. So, despite what I tell my wife. So what I'd like for the council to do, if you don't mind, give that draft ordinance a good read. Give me your thoughts. Give me your thoughts for improvement. Give me your thoughts on anything that you think might, you know, may, maybe should be omitted. And then I'd like to come back for first passage at the next meeting for some, with something, you know, solid that we can take a vote on. And I did put a provision in there that speaks, again, to Councilwoman Souza's point, with regard to folks that maybe are, have some issues physically being able to remove the snow, or financially being able to pay somebody else to do that. I know that that gets a little bit sticky, because, you know, you're treating certain groups of residents differently from others. But I did read several different ordinances from, in different regions around the state, specifically those bordering us. You know, Pawtucket does have such a provision in their ordinance for, you know, they call it a hardship. You can apply for a hardship through DPW. Your name goes out of list. How that is then administered becomes, you know, a matter for the mayor, et cetera. So I think we'd probably want to leave out any kind of ambiguities. We don't want to create an administrative burden, if we can avoid it. And at the same time, and to Frederica's point, we want to make sure, I mean, we know that it hasn't been great. There are some people that do it, there are some people that don't. Too many of them get away with it. Let's fix it.
Right. So I want to thank you again for, for being involved in this. I have also been speaking with our city solicitor, and going back and forth with Mark, with some of the, I don't think I got the most recent draft of the ordinance, because I did send some of my thoughts and ideas for consideration towards that ordinance to incorporate it. And it sounds like maybe some of it was in that current ordinance. So I'd have to look at it again. I know there was some concern about, like you said, making specific restrictions, as it may preclude other people, and have, people would come forward and have reason to contest it. So keeping it broad, but I think it's important to acknowledge that there are a group of people who just ultimately cannot physically or through their disability take care of their property. And so we want to be able to provide them with those resources. So like I said, I did send that information over. I need to, you know, like to look at the updated one to see if that has been incorporated, which it sounds like, by what you're saying, it may have been.
Some, yes.
Some. So again, I'll maybe have Mike forward it to you, or I can forward to you the paragraph for some of the parts that I thought were pertinent to, to that ordinance as part of my contribution, and then we can move forward with it.
Yeah, and if we've got a situation where an ordinance is a non-emergency, and this is important, but it's not an emergency, I'd really like to give Mike, you know, kind of the added, you know, I don't call it courtesy, but added time to actually look at it, digest it, roll it around his head a little bit, rather than just coming to first passage and saying, Mike, is this legal? You know, can we go?
You're assuming there won't be any snow between now and next November?
Yeah, it sounds like that's a bad assumption. Hopefully not shovel-able snow in the morning, so.
I don't know how this can help, but maybe it could be a community program, as we've discussed, you know, high school students helping out our neighbors and, but in Bristol, when I was installing those lock boxes, I discovered that there were five seniors that no one absolutely did not plow or shovel the walkway for them. And I did what was called an adopt a home program, where I paired a contractor, plow contractor, that worked on that street anyways, with that resident. I don't know if that, and the only, the only exchange was that they got publicity out of it. There's hundreds of plow companies. Maybe that's something that we can start here also, you know?
So not to, so not to get too much into this, because it's still in its very, its seeding stage, and I will be addressing it probably within the next couple of months in front of the council and to the community, once we've got some more substance. But we are, I and, and I believe my Max, who's one of my constituents, may, said he may have reached out to Councilwoman Cahoon.
You do.
And so we're looking to start a nonprofit organization in the community that is all encompassing for all areas in the community, whether it's the disabled, the elderly, substance abuse, you know, low income. I mean, it's just going to be the all-in-one organization for East Providence. And it, we have a lot of volunteers and companies and businesses on board to donate, sponsor, and assist with multiple, I mean, it's endless. But again, we're in a seeding process. There's discussions, there's, we're kind of coming together and building this nonprofit. So once I have more information, we'll be doing that. I do want to mention that Wednesday at the East Providence Wieners is going to be where we're meeting to discuss some of the things, and ask anybody who's interested to please come to the EP Wieners to bring your suggestions, anything that, you know, if you want to be part of the team, I do welcome you guys to come.
That's tomorrow?
Wednesday, yeah. Yeah, five, it's at five, five.
Five. One of the things also is, we should tap into the resources that we have right in our community. You see me talking to the Boy Scouts out here, and one of the things I had implement with them two years ago is just the aspect of shoveling sidewalks, primarily for those who are either disabled or the elderly, more importantly, and, you know, within a certain radius of their house. So there is stuff out there, there is things that are out there that we can literally tap into. I'm working with the Boy Scouts, and through my conversations and multiple meetings that I've had with them, that's one of the things that we currently do.
Every student at East Providence High School needs to accumulate 24 hours of community service before they can graduate. And that's 24 hours of documented, verifiable, community service. So there's definitely enough muscle out there to be helping out the folks that could use it, as I'm sure they did, you know, when they could.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay, very good. That concludes Removal of Snow and Ice Ordinance Discussion, and we'll move right on to the next item, please.
Discussion only, Budget Session Review Meeting on March 22nd, 2019, focusing on the City Clerk Department Budget, Councilman Cahoon.
I think Madam Clerk pretty much said it all. We met again, she, I, Malcolm, the mayor, on the 22nd of March. We specifically looked at the Clerk's budget. Clerk's budget is pretty straightforward in that it's very, you know, labor-heavy, if you will. We talked about a couple of things. Number one was, again, getting a little bit of visibility into those salary, you know, kind of line-by-line salaries, which, you know, and the mayor pointed out that, you know, kind of through Open Gov, we're going to have a lot of that very soon. So that's going to ask, answer a lot of these questions going forward, which will be helpful. Again, the phone issue came up, and I think that's probably something that we, as a city, have to look at. There seem to be some, a lot of phones out there that maybe, you know, aren't in use or are being paid for. So, you know, that, that might be something we want to think about, you know, how do we decide who gets issued a phone? Who really needs a phone, right? I mean, if you're on duty here during a set hours, especially if you're working under some kind of contract, and you don't have an obligation to respond after duty hours, you probably don't need a phone, right? So, I mean, just things like that. You know, Clerk actually, you know, pointed out specifically her phone and said, you know, I don't need this phone, I'm not, I have my own personal phone, that's fine. So that's, you know, things like that are things that we want to continue to watch. And Ms. Burnett pointed out also, you know, probably one area of kind of underutilized funding that we have maybe within the city are, you know, the historical preservation funds, and specifically how they might be utilized, you know, to preserve the whole host of documents that we've got, you know, back in there going back a century, and certainly are of value to the city. So, you know, I think it was, again, it was a productive discussion. It wasn't a very long session. It wasn't as in-depth as our session on the city manager and council and mayor's office were, but it's not as complicated a budget. I think we're going to be going through another budget that's pretty straightforward this coming Friday, is the senior center budget. That's the next one up on the docket. We're basically just going in order of line items. And then after that, we get into something that's a little bit more complex. We'll be looking at the IT budget, you know, and then eventually we'll be moving into the, you know, police and fire budgets, as, you know, as you know, those are, those are fairly complicated and substantive, so.
Mr. President, can we clarify, and it's not really in the Clerk's budget, but the fact that, and you, you had discovered there is a line item evidently for city council members to have cell phones, and that there was, it probably amounted to $20,000, I guess?
No, it wasn't that, it wasn't that high. So it was, it was, so, and actually, it's a good point, because it's something else I checked out with Kelly Arons, and she helped provide some information on. The city, the phone stipend that's associated, I guess it's a stipend, but the line item that says telephones under the city council budget is $4,200. And specifically, that's intended to support your use of your personal phone for city business, right? It's something that's added on top of the stipend that city council members receive. So whether or not that's receive. So whether or not that's money well spent, I say it's not, because I'm going to have my phone regardless. I'm not going to use it any more or less because I'm a member of the city council. But, you know, that's for the city council to decide. Another thing that Kelly helped me understand is the Air cards and the iPads, so that's so we can access a network via cellular connection. We pay $40 per month per iPad. So you do the math for that, right? There's five of us. That's, you know, 200 bucks a month times 12, you know, it starts to add up over time. So I'm probably going to ask to have mine shut off. I do use my iPad a lot, but I think with the connectivity that we have, you know, for wireless, we probably don't need a cellular signal. But again, these are things we find out. I mean, these are things that, you know, different councils may have needed for different reasons. Don't know. It's all something that, the first step is identifying these things and then deciding whether or not we need them.
Well, I appreciate your work there. I go on record as saying I don't want the city to pay for my cellphone usage. I didn't run for that reason. I think maybe back in the day when cell phones first come out, there wasn't internet usage, social media, as great as it is today. But I, if we have line items that are available, I'd just soon get that scoreboard built at Pier Stadium that the baseball field needs. You know, as they start baseball this week with a scoreboard that's not working, you know, if there's money that could buy a scoreboard, I gladly, but it sounds complicated. It sounds like it's woven into our stipend as council members.
The budget line, I mean, it's a line item. It's something that we could easily, you know, not have if we didn't want it anymore. But, I mean, I think that's a council decision. As we move on and take a look at the IT, I mean, there are a number of things. So I think everybody knows I work for the federal government, right? And the federal government is really a leader in capitalizing IT usage. I mean, you basically, we don't even really use phones anymore at work. We use Google Hangouts for everything. And Gmail is what we use. Gmail is what the school department used. I'm kind of actually surprised when I look at our email and I say, "Why aren't we using Gmail? What we use really isn't that great to me." And there are probably opportunities for us to save money, and as we go through these things budget by budget to create synergy for these items that we don't necessarily, wouldn't need if, you know, we maybe took a different strategy. But, you know, you can't eat the elephant in one bite, you know what I mean?
Yep, yep. Well, thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk, will you move right on to the next item, please?
I believe we're going to table the next discussion. Is that correct, Councilman Morato?
Correct. We already had the discussion with the presentation.
All right. So that concludes council members' communication. Moving right on to new business.
New business, reports of other city officials. The first is Claims Committee Report. Solicitor Michael J. Marcello.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council President Britto and members of the city council, as you know, the Claims Committee met at 6:30, an executive session to discuss the number of claims and litigation involving the city. The first matter regarding Brian Ferrier versus the city of East Providence, the discussions and the vote taken during that session will remain closed pursuant to 42-464B. Votes taken in closed session need not be disclosed for the period of time which its disclosure would jeopardize any strategy, negotiation, or investigation undertaken pursuant to discussions related to ongoing litigation. So that will remain sealed and closed. New claims, all the claims were approved as stated by the city council, as submitted by the Director of Public Works, and upon motion made by Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Cahoon, a claim for reimbursement for sewer backup by Mr. Christopher Day in the amount of $1,629. A claim, excuse me, for Mr. Adam Gid in the amount of $217.03 was referred to Verizon, who's doing construction on the roadway. A claim of Mary and Robert Lyons to a damage to a fence in the amount of $1,470 was referred to the Rhode Island DOT as at the location of the fence in the roadway is a state road. A claim of Augusto Reyes Jr., claim for reimbursement for expenses incurred as a result of sewer backup was approved, approved the amount of $900. Sewer abatements, the following sewer abatements were approved, the amount of $154.44 by Michael Duff. The claim of $264.96 for Shane Pollack. And the claim of Ciada Rocha and Fatima Lima in the amount of $167.87. And that concludes my report. Mr. President.
Mr. President, I'd like to add that all of the approvals were based on recommendations from city staff, and they were, these are examples of areas where city trees roots went through a person's pipe in the ground and caused problems in the home. It's not their fault. So we did not approve cases of leaky sinks and faulty faucets. This is something different. These were recommended approvals by department heads, and we agreed, as well as some of them were referred to state agencies where applicable. With that, I would move approval of the solicitor's report.
Okay. We have an approval for the solicitor's report. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
And we have a second on the motion. Madam Clerk, may we take a roll call vote on this, please?
Yes. Councilman Morato?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
And Council President Britto?
Aye. Next item, please.
Resolutions for vote. Resolution in support of H-5489 relating to domestic abuse prevention sponsored by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Souza. I'm so sorry, it's late. Councilwoman Souza?
Thank you. As many may know, March was National, International Women's History Month, and the theme this year was domestic violence, love and peace, and promoting that within the family. And women who were honored, that have done so in the communities nationally over the years, and continue to do that type of work to this day, setting the way for our future generation. So I was very pleased, and I think all that were involved, the city clerk was instrumental, along with Alma Pina, in organizing the event. We had a wonderful group of young ladies who came from Riverside Middle School, Martin Middle School, and the senior high school, that were here to hear our guest speakers. And I want to thank the guests, the panel that was here also for the discussion. So that was Officer Candace Pacico, firefighter Erica Kachery, and a senior at PC College, Sarah Jean, who also does work on campus involving women empowerment and resources. So it's important that we educate our women and empower them, and especially our young ladies. You know, February was teen dating abuse. So again, getting the message out there to these children is important, and being a leader to promote protection for the victims of domestic violence is also important. And I know that's not limited to just females. So I just, you know, want to point that out, that we know it doesn't just mean females get, are involved in domestic violence. Men are also victims of that also. So I came across a bill that is sponsored by Rep. Blaze Zwisky, that's currently in committee, and hopefully moves out of committee, onto the floor for a vote. And that resolution has to deal with children that are related, or maybe non-related, but in a household that there's domestic violence. And so this would protect them in addition to the victim that is experiencing domestic violence. So I'm just going to read for the record the resolution. So whereas the study shows that three to four million children between the ages of three and 17 are at risk of exposure to domestic violence each year, and whereas the U.S. government statistics say that 95% of domestic violent cases involve women victims, victims of male partners, the children of these women often witness the domestic violence. And whereas witnessing domestic violence in general has been associated with emotional, behavioral, and learning problems in children, and whereas children often suffer emotional and physiological trauma from living in the homes, which there is domestic violence, and whereas children from domestic, children from violent homes have a higher risk for drug, alcohol, abuse, traumatic, post-traumatic stress disorders, and juvenile delinquency. Witnessing domestic violence is the single best predator of juvenile delinquency in adult crimes. It is also a number-one reason why children run away. And whereas the House Bill 5489 on Act relating to domestic relations, domestic abuse prevention, has been introduced to the Rhode Island General Assembly. And whereas this act purports to allow plaintiffs seeking domestic abuse protection orders in family court to include any of their minor children who are not related to defendant by blood or marriage within the same complaint in restraining order, rather than seeking a protection under District Superior Court of children's not biologically related or marriage-related to the defendant. So now therefore be resolved that the City Council of East Providence supports the House Bill 5489, and respectfully request that the General Assembly enact this bill into law. Now thereby it be further resolved that the city clerk send a copy of this resolution to the governor of the state of Rhode Island, the lieutenant governor of the state of Rhode Island, the president of the state senate, the president, the speaker of the Rhode Island House, of speaker of representatives, and to the senator and representatives of the city of East Providence. I ask, respectfully ask, that the council move to approve this as it is a really important item and bill that is currently being considered up at the State House. And as this does mention, the long-term effects of being exposed to these types of environments do have lasting effects on the community and the children as a whole. And like I mentioned at the Women's Day event, breaking the cycle is the key component to all of this. So in helping these children get out of those situations so they're not continuously exposed is really important, because it's a ripple effect that occurs in these situations.
I would take that as a form of a motion. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Mr. President, I'd just say a word.
Sure.
First, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Souza for putting that event together, and along with Madam Clerk. I grew up in a domestic, you know, environment from my early memories at two, three years old, all the way to 15 years old, so I can relate. I've seen the domestic violence laws, you know, move, progress forward in leaps and bounds since those early days when the parent was just told to go out, cool off, and come back. So there's always room for improvement, especially the job I do. I see, you know, what children go through. And you're right, it's not just women who are victims, however they are.
The majority.
The majority of the victims, so.
Thank you, Councilman. So we do have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Souza, and seconded by Councilman Rodericks.
Mr. President, I'd just add one thing quickly. I did, you know, I did read through the bill, so, you know, thank you, Councilwoman Souza, for bringing this. And I would like to also thank Representative Kazarian for, you know, she's one of the cosponsors of this bill, if you will, so.
Okay. With that acknowledgement, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Morato?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks?
Aye.
And Council President Britto?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Ordinances for the vote, an introduction of ordinance in first passage, an ordinance and amendment of Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances of the city of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled administration, sponsored by Councilman Morato.
So first, I'd like to thank the council for the input at the last council meeting regarding this ordinance. I believe the ordinance needed a little bit of tweaking to get it to where it should be today, and there's always room for improvement, of course. I'd like to start off. Madam Clerk, do you know the last count of open boards and commissions, where we were at 152, I believe?
It's 152 or 125. It was one of those.
So the idea between, the idea of adding, doing a little language change, it's that we want to offer the boards and commissions, we want to open it, open it to the public, open it up to the public. However, knowing that not every board and commission is going to be filled, we also like the opportunity to have people serving on one current board. They can serve on multiple boards, however, but first giving the other boards that they serve the opportunity for fresh people to come in, such as the waterfront, the carousel, and so on. So some of the language change that I'm proposing for first passage based on our last meeting, I can go through it if the council would like to put out to public. And also, I mean, with this passage, I mean, if down the road, these boards continue to not be filled, we can revisit this. If the ordinance, you know, if the boards are filled and there's people on 20 boards, the same person on 20 boards, we can revisit it. I don't see that happening, Bart. I'd like to open it up to the council for any comments.
If I may start, I think one of the concerns that I raised when we talked about this last time was, you know, I do think it would be appropriate for folks to serve on more than one board. And I had the opportunity to talk to Councilman Morato about this. I think that the provision, the way that he's got it worded now in paragraph E, where it talks about, you know, you can serve on more than one board, you know, so, so long as there isn't somebody else who wants to serve on that board, and the way that we determine that there isn't somebody else who wants to serve on that one board is that the vacancy, posted vacancy has occurred for more than 10 days. I think 10 days sounds like a reasonable amount of time to me. Again, I don't think that it sounds like, and there's no science to any of this, for sure, but it doesn't sound like that would be an undue deterrent from anybody who, you know, really wanted to do it. "Okay, I wait my 10 days. If no one comes forward, then I can do it as well." And that way, I think, is kind of, it's optimizing, you know, kind of channeling the energy of people that are excited about doing this, and not letting any one particular group of folks gobble up all the positions.
The idea is to make a fair for the public. We have people that are showing interest of, take for example, the carousel. We had a young, young couple that were, they were at the last meeting, and that's great to see, you know. And that's what we're trying to encourage. It doesn't, it doesn't prevent someone who is currently serving on two boards to continue to put that, put their name in right from the beginning on that second board. But if someone comes along that has, you know, the proper criteria for whatever that board is or whatnot, then we should give that person the opportunity also.
Agreed.
So, and some of these boards that are currently open right now, we don't have to wait 10 days, because they've been posted forever.
Yep.
You know, so it's just, it's basically those that are coming up on expiration. Like I said, it's just giving the public the opportunity to serve and get involved in the community with some of these boards.
So, and when you're talking about the boards, are you talking about non-decision-making boards, or boards as in, I think the non-decision boards is?
I think it's going to be boards in general. And I'll direct at the town city solicitor, because we went back and forth with this ordinance in regards to decision-making boards versus, and the ordinance, the way it's written, I believe it states all boards and commissions, which that would include, like the waterfront, that would include the carousel, and so on.
Actually, the, the, excuse me, the waterfront would not apply to this, because that's a city, that's a state board, I'm sorry, just so you know. And I know that's confusing.
Yeah, yeah.
The prohibition, actually, if you look at Section E, Council, and I apologize, I apologize if this is not what your intent, but it only applies to boards with decision-making authority. If you look at the last section of E, there shall be no limit to service on advisory boards or commissions. So like, I believe, I think the carousel commission is an advisory board. They only had advisory power. So it's only those boards that have decision-making authority.
And just for the record, the second to last line in that Section E, they serve as, should be liaison. There's a misprint in the spelling, just so we get that clarified.
Yep.
Can we just make that an amendment?
Amendment, yeah.
Which one is that?
Section E, towards the latter of that paragraph, the second to last line, start, it's number one. So boards and commissions shall not extend to the boards and commissions in which the person service was at the appointment of another board and commission to which they are to serve as a liaison. It's liazing. So they're just a type of...
We'll fix that. Just make an amendment so we can make that change, please.
So just want to make an amendment. So just want to make an amendment to change that to liaison, just for technical reasons.
I also want to thank Mark Vitale for his help on getting this language to where it's at right now.
So the only other, the only thing after reading through this, I think in, in general, it's a good, some of the changes are good. The only thing that I have hesitation to is Section F, where we're restricting, so it's the identification, so showing proof of residency. We're now limiting it to just one proof of residency, a government form of ID. People move all the time and don't necessarily change their licensing because that's time at the DMV, and nobody likes to go to the DMV and spend their afternoon there, and cost effective. So people tend to wait till their license is renewed. So I think that that doesn't really lend to being sufficient, in my opinion, enough to prove residency. I know we like to go on the honor system, but at the end of the day, not everybody is honest. I hate to say that. I mean, I'd like to be in a trusting world, but that's not necessarily what we live in. So I think it's still prudent to have some other type of resident documentation. Again, I'm not interested in seeing the substance of the document, just that that document matches your residence and your ID.
So we, we had a lot of discussion on this, the solicitor and myself, and Mark. And, I mean, the person, whoever is running that board can ask for a, you know, a water bill or a, you know, utility, utility bill to satisfy that. I, I just didn't think it was necessary. They're just serving on a board, they're not working for NASA. I mean, to have two forms of ID and everyone, my feeling is, everyone knows each other on that board, and they know when someone moves out of the city. So it is, it is kind of the honor system. We have to have, we have to have trust and confidence in these people that we are appointing to these boards. And if we didn't, we wouldn't appoint the boards to begin with. You know, I just thought it was kind of extreme, like we need two forms of ID. When I, when I filled out the paperwork for council member, I think I gave a DNA sample, my passport, my license, I forgot what else, identification, you know.
So this information isn't necessarily public. I don't know, actually, if it's public record or not. Probably not. It's for the purpose of its board members only. But in the effort of keeping things for each ward being representative, that's why, like I mentioned earlier, for the carousel appointments, we had two members that, because this ordinance was in place, they came before the council and said, you know, we did move, and so now we're not being represented in our respected wards. Would you consider reappointing us to our respected wards? So it's not a matter that they're not still residents in the city, but for keeping the, each ward represented appropriately, I think it's important to make sure that people are in that ward and have a right, you know. I don't mind that you've moved to Ward Three, but then I only, you know, Ward Two now no longer has representation or has less than your ward. So it's just in the spirit of keeping it all equal, and that's the reason why it's divided into wards, so that there's an equal representation throughout the city. Again, it's just my personal opinion. It is at the pleasure of the council. I think, I don't even know if we have an updated list of, is all the boards and commissions been compliant with providing those, you know, so that's another, entirely different conversation. So we're not even in, the boards and commissions currently aren't even in compliance with the standards, you know, that we've set in the ordinance as it stands.
So with that, with that said, I may leave that up to the council of, the council feels that the language should be the same with two forms of proof of residency to include a photo ID and additional forms, such as a utility bill, mortgage statement, or tax bill. I'm fine with that. I just thought it was a little bit redundant to have all of those, you know, identifications when we should have trust in the people that we do appoint. But I'm fine, I'm fine either way.
President, it's...
It's the chair of the respective commission that does the verification, not we as a council who may appoint people.
Right.
It's the chair of that commission, according to the language that it looks like. So I might put someone on a, say, a carousel commission, but then the chair of that commission has to verify the residence, residency.
I believe they have to keep a rolling record of the, the members. So we would obviously, before appointing somebody, we would have to verify that that person's in our ward to appoint them. But then the chair is responsible for the rolling bookkeeper.
During their terms.
Yeah, to keep track of that, because people switch during their terms, you know, renters, careers, family obligations.
It would be a yearly check. It's that commission.
But one would expect also that if I'm appointing someone, that I'm going to do that work, and I know who that person is, where they live, and the reason why they want to be on that board.
Sure.
So a lot of that, I mean, I kind of vent that out, vet that out myself, because I know the person. I know they reside in East Providence, you know, or in the ward, so.
Now we do, but this, but we do have a lot of members who are active that we, none of us appointed, that have been rolling, and some of the terms are six years. So they were appointed, you know, two years ago, three years ago, and they still have another three to four years on their term, which is fine. But I just, I think it just needs to be an honest system, and people aren't even presenting what we're asking over a year ago. Why wouldn't you give that information if there's nothing wrong with, if you are residing where you should be residing?
I think I'd like to hear what the public has to say about it. So maybe to that end, you know, we put it forward through first passage, you know, with this conversation having been out there.
Yeah.
You know, maybe folks can come forward and speak and let us know what perspective they have on particularly that issue. That might be useful in helping us to, you know, craft a second.
Final passage.
If you will. So, I mean, I think along those lines. I'm sensitive to over-collecting information. Having been a military member, a federal government employee whose stuff got stolen and no longer belongs to me, you know, that's something I constantly have to deal with and will have to deal with the rest of my life, and that's my reward for having a top-secret security clearance. So I don't, I don't, I'm always kind of sensitive about taking too much if we don't need it, especially if we have issues about protecting it. And I'm not, that's not a slight on, you know, anybody who works in city hall, especially the clerk's office. It's just hackers out there are way better than we are at protecting stuff. So I'm always kind of, so I think I'd like to hear what the public has to say. And I think to that end, I think I'm moving to support passage, first passage of the ordinance as written.
As amended.
As amended. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mike. Yes, yes, as amended.
Ms., Madam Clerk?
Thank you. If we could, one of the things that our policy director, Mark Vitale, and I have been looking at is also the updated minutes and agendas. For example, I didn't mention this earlier, but for instance, the carousel commission is required because they receive funds to update their minutes and make sure that they are uploaded onto the Secretary of State website. And after looking in, it was a great exercise to go through the boards and commissions, because for the carousel commission, they have not submitted any minutes since 2018. So that's since January 2018. So if, somewhere maybe in there, if we could add updated minutes or something on there, not just a link, because we could put the link on there to the Secretary, the Secretary of State's website, but to actually have them follow the guidelines. If we could put something in there. I don't, I don't know what kind of verbiage we could, we could do, Mike.
Is that what section, is that what number A, point threes, kind of?
Yeah, this one, right, Councilwoman Souza, a link to the board or commission agendas and minutes on the Secretary of State's website. But to have something maybe added in there saying that, that is, that is
Amended.
Mandated. Mandated, to be in line with the Open Meetings Act.
It's already state law, so they're required to do. If they're not doing it, they're violating the law. So, I mean, the ordinance, the ordinance, I mean, you can repeat it, but it's a requirement of state law. So they, all boards and commissions should be posting their minutes online and with, with your office once they are completed.
Okay.
So as I, as I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Solicitor, who, I know we appoint people to these boards and commissions, but who oversees the general function of these, also them being compliant with state law or local ordinances?
It's a good question. I would generally say, in general, it should be the chairperson of that committee, as well as with some oversight by the city clerk's office, because they're the keeper of the official city record, and these are official city boards. So if a board or commission is meeting, the minutes of those meetings should be transmitted to the clerk's office, so she can keep them in her books. But they should also, I would assume that's put more work on the city clerk, but I would assume that she should also make sure that they're posting them on the Secretary of State's website. But the ultimate person would be really the chairperson or chairwoman of that committee.
But who do they report to? So you're saying the chair is reportable to the city clerk's office?
Well, I mean, if, they really should be referred, they report to the appointing authority. So if the city, if the city council is the appointing authority, then, you know, they should be kind of refer, you know, back to you because you're the appointing authority. But you don't really, depending on what the board is, but generally, you look back to the appointing authority to make sure that they're doing their job.
Because I know there was an issue probably 18, maybe two years ago, I'm not quite sure, don't quote me on the date, where we had this problem with the waterfront commission, where things weren't being posted on the city's webs, the state website. Nobody could find the minutes, and they had it on their personal website, which didn't, that didn't meet the standard for state. It has to be posted. So I can, with good confidence, say that I'm sure all of our boards and commissions are not submitting any of these minutes.
Maybe, I've seen this in other cities and towns, and maybe it might be a good idea, now that we're kind of, I'm getting a little bit more stable in my office, but maybe the city clerk and I could have a, call a general meeting of all the boards and commissions and go over the requirements, as what they need to do is for posting requirements and whatnot, and kind of educate them, or even just send them a memo. So that might be helpful.
When you say all the boards and commissions, you mean the chairpersons of all the boards and commissions?
Whatever, probably the chair, or even if people just want to come and, you know, realize that what the law is they're supposed to be following.
And the president Report back to us.
Report back to us, yeah.
I would have, I would agree, Councilman Cahoon, that this is okay for first passage. Let's see what people say. The only change I might look at is in letter D, I believe. I know Councilwoman Murato and I had a conversation about this. When we talk about only decision-making commissions, to me, it's a little nebulous. I mean, don't, all of the commissions make some decisions. I mean, even, I know some are more legal than others. Personnel Hearing Board, Tax Review Board, those are meaty commissions that affect taxpayers directly. But the carousel commission votes to spend money on fixing the carousel. They'll come to us for that.
I think the ordinance, excuse me, the ordinance states that they're an advisory committee or one of...
Advisory, but they make decisions.
They do, but it's, but...
So I don't know if we need that wording.
I mean, there is, there is a distinction in the ethics law and in general between boards that make decisions and those that are just advisory, advisory. Because boards that are advisory don't have final say. It's usually another board, or maybe the council, or maybe the mayor's office, or some other thing.
I mean, it's no big deal. It's just to me that they all make decisions.
Yeah. So I think that with respect to the carousel, they do come to the city council for additional funds. I think the spending that they do is based on grants that they apply for to fix or restore stuff. But anything further than that, like we know, they're trying to get that railroad and expand the property, and so they're seeking council assistance. So anything that has to do, they're looking for us to approve that. They can't really do much on their own.
Well, with, with that, I would move first passage.
I second that. I think, you know, I'm always open, I think first passage is, you know, important to start the ball rolling, and then, you know, second passage gives the opportunity for the community's input, and then to reevaluate whatever ordinance is presented, and then make some changes. And, you know, there's no rush in making anything. We want to make sure with all the things that we're doing, that we're thinking them through and making good, found judgments on them. So I'm happy to second that.
So we have a motion on the floor?
Be, be a stickler. I did make the motion to move as amended.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Cahoon, and seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call, vote please.
Councilman.
For first passage, that is.
Yes, that's right, first passage. Councilwoman Murato.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Councilwoman Cahoon.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Reconvening Executive Session if necessary to complete items under Section Two.
Well, it's not necessary, so.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I may, one second. I'm going to go off docket, just one second. I just want to let everybody know, East Providence High School is having their production of Jesus Christ Superstar Thursday, Friday, Saturday this week. I know the kids have been working really, really hard on that. I got a kid who's in that production. I know the mayor has a kid who's in that production. So I think that's a, a really great thing that our school does. Our school does, they've done it annually. They always do a great job. Come on and support them if you can. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay.
Wood. Let's not forget, we got a motion to adjourn at this time.
Yes. Second.
A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, vote please.
Councilwoman Murato.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you.
It's adjourned.
Again, anybody have any photos to submit to us of the city of East Providence? Please submit them. You could send them to myself or the city clerk's office. We'll be more than happy to post them during the meetings.